Uh, September eleventh.
I put it in the folder.
Scott, how was your trip?
Yeah. It was very nice. Was a week of some decent weather and some lakes and beers.
Nice. All right.
Your brother join you?
No. No, it's amazing. By the time you get to Minneapolis, you're only a foot or a minute, you know, it just, and hopefully, it freaks you out, or a car and the whole, it's just, so.
Oh, yeah.
Come up last year.
Kids are from Chels too.
I think it is.
Traveling, that can't be.
You staying there?
We're not on the road here.
Talking about my brother.
Hey, buddy!
But I think it's hot. Good evening everyone, and welcome to this week of Operation Council, and like calls being ordered, first item on the agenda is to address the agenda for approval, and we'd like to drop J seven, is that correct?
Correct.
Anything else? So with that, one of the two.
With that note, I would move approval of the agenda.
Scott?
Scott.
And Paul? Move second to approve the agenda with one adjustment, then the board of that motion, all pay for that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications, this is part of the meeting we're doing, want to talk to council about any items not on the agenda, now's the public time to do that at this point, so just introduce yourself. Turn around.
Is there a button I need to press here?
I think it's on.
It's green.
I think it's on.
You're gonna go?
Yeah.
Name of the address.
Good evening, City Council, my name is Cindy Roberts-Cotton, I live at nine oh two Palisades Road, just across the street from the LBC, and I wanted to just take, my main purpose in speaking this evening is I want to extend my appreciation to Police Chief Lynx for time that he took with me, I think it was just a couple of weeks ago. I had written a letter to Jason and the former police chief with concerns I had about speeding on Palisades Road, and it wasn't something that needed immediate attention, it's just after living there for, I guess I'm going on four years, I moved from Iowa City to Mount Vernon to hang out with my grandkids more frequently, it's been a blast, I love it. And my front window in my, my Unit B looks right into the, it would be the south entrance of the LBC. And I really appreciated my conversation with the police chief, because ever since I had moved to that location, and that was before I was kinda hanging out with more grandkids, I didn't think too much about the excessive speeding on that road, and I recognized it as excessive numerous times, and when I make these comments, I am not targeting only high school students, I'm targeting everybody that's on that road, whether construction workers, high school students, everyday citizens, and before my oldest grandson started to school and walking to school, I, I'm kind of ashamed to say that I didn't think too much about it, and there are all sorts of kids that walk to school, bike, scooter, but when he started school, I suddenly realized, this is not, this is unacceptable, and I just began noticing it a whole lot more, and so I wrote that letter, early part of the summer, didn't need immediate attention, and then the two of us talked, and we talked about some of the, you know, remedies that could be looked at, and certainly with school around the corner, and now I will have two grandkids walking to school, and I will maybe hover in behind them for a while, until my daughter says, "Mom, go home," which, I'm fine with that, but it's an adjustment. So mainly I'm bringing this up that I would want anyone, regardless of where you're living, to be aware of that, there are all sorts of traffic issues, even in a small town such as Mount Vernon, Palisades Road is the one that I'm most familiar with, it's out my front window sometimes, I've got my, one of my lawn chairs in the front where sometimes I read the newspaper, I'm an avid gardener and walker of my neighborhood, I see a lot of activities going on, wonderful activities, and then I'm always looking at the cars on Palisades Road, and it's really a mixed bag, and so I'm just raising that to your attention because I think in any part of Mount Vernon, particularly when school starts and that's right around the corner, there are all sorts of spaces like that that need attention, and I know our police force does a wonderful job of monitoring so many things, I am looking forward to seeing, I would love to see a, a police car right in that parking lot, right at that corner where I can see them, I'm going to challenge any of you, and I'm serious when I say this, if you want to come and see what the traffic is like on that early, well, and it's, it's continued traffic, whether it's the first day of school or the thirty-first day of school, I'm right across the street, I've got a great view, I will serve you coffee, I will serve you baked goods, and I will have an extra chair for you if you want to see what this is like, if you just haven't noticed it, I know, our mayor knows exactly what it's like, but sometimes they're all, you know, even in a small town, there are traffic issues elsewhere in Mount Vernon that I'm not aware of because I don't live over there, but, and that's not a facetious statement by me, I will serve you coffee and baked goods, if you want to see, you want to get to my house before eight o'clock, and it'll be over by eight twenty. That is, you know, I'm, not joking aside, but I am very concerned about this, and I just want, you know, with these two intersections that kids deal with, and they cross Palisades Road at, at different places, and two busy intersections, and I think for the most part people are really, really careful, and then every now and then I see a, a car going down far beyond the twenty-five miles an hour, and we have been very fortunate, at least in the time that I've been there, there hasn't been some tragic accident, my grandson did have an un, very uncomfortable, he did just fine, but he told me all about it the day after, and I said, "Did you tell mom and dad?" because I want them to know about it too, and it just kind of brought it back, and I thought, I know the drivers can do better, I would love to see some tickets out there, and a sign that says, "Hey, you're not going twenty-five miles an hour," and thank you for listening, that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think the speed trailer, whatever the correct name for that is, is coming out into that area soon.
That's what I, that's what I heard, yeah.
Talk to people in classes at the LBC to recognize that beginning next Monday, the traffic patterns will change dramatically, so for those of you who recognize that too. Thank you.
I'll be looking for it.
Obviously, I'll be, I'll own that. Any other comments? If it offers beverages and treats? Moving on to consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda, consent minutes and liquor license for water potatoes.
I would move to approve that consent agenda.
If you staff.
Second.
I'll take Mark and Alan, I'm just the last name, move to second to approve the consent agenda, and if there are no matters to pull off of that, all ready to vote on that consent agenda, all pay for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving down to G, resolutions for approval, eight, eighteen, twenty, twenty-five, A, approval fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-two, six, transfers. Any explanation, Chris? Any explanatory?
This is our transfer to the debt service, preparation for bond payments.
New approval resolution to date that eighteen, twenty, twenty-five, A, for the initial debt transfers.
Please second.
Keep all saying, move to second to move forth, the transfers, debt transfers, as listed here, and that is a local vote, so.
Turner?
Yes.
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 Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution passes, moving on to motions for approval, received the consideration of claims list, second draft this afternoon from Marsha, any questions in that?
Just the load of router charge that was identical for the camera versus the getting in their claim, those are two different charges, right?
Yes.
They just happen to be the same.
Yes.
Question. Mark and that.
I would move approval of the claims list as presented by Marsha.
A second.
Craig and Stephanie, move to second to move forth, last claims list is presented, as a voice vote, all pay for that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of Ferguson Water Works invoice zero five three zero five nine eight, getting some more meters on step, on hand.
Not too exciting, yeah.
So these are just to have when new construction comes in, they've got what we need them to install, basically?
Residential meters we supply, commercial meters, we develop our residential meters we supply.
With that, I would move approval of the Ferguson Water Works invoice zero five three zero five nine eight, in the total of four thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Please step Mark, second to move forth, the Ferguson Water Works invoice, quick question, probably elder, the last thing we talked about, you were down to like thirty meters at?
Yeah, we're down to twenty.
Twenty, okay, so it's going, it's still going down.
This'll be the first month though where fifty dollar.
Okay, that's where I was going with it too, so, but it's getting better, good. All right, motion on four to approve this Ferguson Water Works invoice, if there are questions, already voted on it, all pay for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of council street light change order with Nelson Electric. Who puts a reset button on the top of the button?
Yeah, they did, they give that one a ton of thought when they, they have the outlets, they're great, they're wonderful, but in order to obviously reset them, we would have to have to look downtown during the event, so this change order will allow us to put a new circuit, run a new wire, so that we can at least trip them here, right outside of the hall.
This would be for all of the new poles, is that, and would each, is there one master trip, or would each one have their own?
So there's one, one master, but then they're not on every pole, but they'll change out the ones that we're using to, be better equipped for the elements.
Was this installation spec by our, by our architect?
Now, I think one of the issues on the pilot project was, we just told them that we wanted outlets, we didn't express to them why. They necessarily didn't get to, but, but we didn't specify this, so there was just some miscommunication in the original spec, that was.
And if you were to string lights across M S Street, you would want them.
That's kind of what they assumed.
I mean, I can sort of see why you might want them there, but.
They assumed that we were using them specifically for Christmas lighting.
See, another detail that wasn't, I don't know if it was mentioned in any of that stuff was, it was, it was tied to the same circuit as the streetlight, so if that, if that GFI tripped, the streetlight itself would go out as well, so I'm like, we can't have that happening.
It's less than a year.
The land's gonna learn some things, which is part of the project. Be nice if they would help with this thirty-four thousand one hundred thirty-one.
It would, the only problem is, we are the ones that request the outlets, so.
Well, I would move approval of Nelson Electric change order for thirty-four thousand one hundred thirty-one, put the breakers.
Second, can you create a call? Move second to move forth, the Nelson Electric uptown lighting project, this time, have written a vote on that, if there are any questions, all pay for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of the B and K invoice five one three seven eight dash ten, which is street extension project, council action as needed.
This is design work on Rachel.
Have you driven by it today, but anything happening there?
No, our pre-construction meeting should happen in the next week.
Get close. I would move approval of the B and K invoice five one three seven eight dash ten for Rachel Street, the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
A second.
Paul and Stephanie, move to second to move forth, the B and K invoice on the Rachel Street Extension Project, if there are no other questions, staff, ready to vote on that, all pay for that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is consideration of B and K invoice on Highway One reconstruction project. Aye, aye aye.
Again, this is just design work for the Highway One project.
Is this considered both north and south?
Correct.
Can they pick that direction that they're gonna do next summer?
They have not.
Do you want to recommend one, or is that, do you get a vote on that?
Uh, no, we won't necessarily vote on it, they don't take into consideration detours and things of that nature. Again, we are under the assumption at this point that they will do a north segment and a south segment, my assumption is they would start with the south segment first, but I haven't verified that.
But still, we're two summers ahead.
As of right now, that is what they're, they're telling us, I will tell you that we won't know for certain until the project is actually bid, some companies may be large amounts to come in and, and do both, while they're in the orange zone, start reconstruction on, you know, there's a, the DOT's window for construction is fairly short when you think about it, they have a hard stoppage when it comes to front battery, so, so I always, like I said, the expectation is it will be a two-year process, but it hasn't been initially gone through an update yet, so.
Construction's on their dime.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, well, for the most part, the construction is on their dime, if there's storm sewer work or something of that nature that has to happen on Highway One, that is our, our infrastructure.
And is that sort of thing where, we're not really gonna know until they dig the hole, and we, or are we, are we anticipating having some?
No, I mean, I'm anticipating about a million dollars worth of work on our end for that long of a stretch, when it comes to intakes and other things, so, if it's less than a million dollars, I'm really happy.
How many times do you have to say that?
Twice now.
At Rachel Street game, almost, you know? Unless there are other questions or concerns, I would move approval of B and K invoice five one three six one dash one two for the Highway One reconstruction in the amount of seventeen thousand nine four dollars.
Scott and Mark, move second to move forth, the next B and K invoice on Highway One reconstruction project, if there are no further questions, already voted on it, all pay for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next slide is discussion of consideration of purchasing Earth Plantar Pro Series self-watering hanging baskets.
So the current baskets that hang from the old poles required us to water them every day. As seasonal employees kind of ride away of the strong and then nonexistent, we've been trying to figure out ways to lessen the cost, and one of the ways is to, that we found in other communities are these baskets, and they only have to water them like two to three times a week, depending on the point of summer, so I always know when Laura gives me the look, and she goes, "How would you expect, or how much would you expect to spend on something that I know that the number's probably bigger than I want?"
It's less than a million.
Yeah. But for fifty of these baskets, we would be spending about ten thousand dollars, I wouldn't tell you that the labor cost alone in one summer will make up the difference.
So prices may vary slightly, are we adding baskets?
Uh, we have, we do have more poles, baskets will be slightly smaller, but they'll be more full, remember that CDG used to do this, and then it was one of the expenses that we took back from them, so, in an effort to, like I said, reduce staff costs on our end, and not have to water them at least six days a week, this would be our preference.
There are water discounts, I think. Yeah.
And this is, here's, I mean, this, this really is, it's not an exaggerated photo, these are what flowers tend to look like when they have a constant water supply in them, so.
Have you driven through Marion? That's what they, they have these.
Oh, they do?
Yes, they do have these, and that's why the baskets are so full.
They are. All right, I will move to approve purchasing the Earth Plantar Pro Series self-watering hanging baskets, it'll cost you fifty, is there a total dollar amount you guys?
It'll be approximately ten thousand dollars, with the fifty is what we need.
Second.
Craig, move seconded, purchase of the Earth Plantar Pro Series self-watering hanging baskets, fifty of them, if there are no other questions, staff, ready to vote on that, all pay for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, discussion consideration of the hydroseed material purchase, specifically for the Stone Brook Park project.
The materials will be approximately fifteen thousand dollars, just wanted to give, or get the blessing of the council to report at the scene, ideally we would have done this right away, and the mother nature decided that was not gonna happen, so, as soon as that drives out, well, check out, next week is probably going to be the start of that one, so I would expect right after the Labor Day that we'll see major hydroseeding efforts take place over there.
I would move approval of the hydroseeding Stone Brook Park, we call, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Mark, move second to move forth, the hydroseed material purchase for Stone Brook Park, and if there are no questions, staff, ready to vote on that, all pay for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Question receiving file, upper of police court. Places here, any questions? You can add?
Nothing to add for me, so, good month, and Heritage Days was great, minus the rain on Friday. I apologize for not having that reported.
You can't really apologize, I mean, I'm going on vacation, and told him I didn't want to see him on the record.
This has a past.
Wonderful. No vacation pictures?
I know. I really feel horrible, because I'm really work oriented, and, and I took two days off, and we had to use three, three hours of PTO.
How dare you?
I did make. You have a month and a half back at least.
I'm capped out. But I did make a small list of just some highlights, but obviously, we just talked about the park in Stone Brook being graded, so we did finish that, I didn't have a chance to get anything, or even a road control in before it rained right away, and so, kind of fought that a little bit, the cruiser asphalt patching, they got done with all of that, which, I don't know if anybody's seen D Street at all, but we have a little backfilling to do there, so I don't know if anybody's got any calls about that or not, but jumping back into that today, right away, trying to tie up some loose ends with that, but the, the patchwork was really nice, done, way, we got half of the trail set up on, out on Bryant Road, ready to pour, I think we're gonna try to pour Wednesday, at least half of that, and then we'll move our four and dubs and do the other half. Spent some time getting the old streetlight poles stripped down with all the signs and electrical boxes, that sort of thing, pulled off of there so they could remove those. The project out at Bryant Road, at the public worksite, is ongoing, Total Tree Care's still removing some trees for us, the timing hasn't worked out, the grade is for us, the, the contractor that's doing all the cleanup out there, I was, they moved their grinder out already, I was hoping to have all the tree removals done, so, the trees that we didn't sell, I could still have them processed, but we'll work through that as it comes, and in lieu of not, in lieu of trying to not get another big brush pile, we've been trying to chip everything as it comes in, for the bunkers, which, that's taking a little bit of time, separating logs still, that Total Tree Care is bringing out to see if we can sell them. The fall field painting has started, so the guys are getting kind of busy doing that, had a fair amount of storm damage in town, nothing crazy, but the stuff that did fall was bigger, for the most part, I think we've seen a lot more of the walnut trees dropping again because of the, the large amount of walnuts on the trees again this year, so that's taken some time, we have done some concrete patching around town, I know, up by Craig's house on.
Oak Ridge.
Oak Ridge, there's an intake that was nearly, you'd probably fall down in there and lay in there, that we had to replace the throat on, along with some other stuff, including the, the new pad for the, the new art piece at the, in the sculpture trail, so we, we got that all done, as usual, some pool maintenance over there. Normal duties, mowing, garbage, hub spot tickets, cemetery stuff, gardening, minor tree trimming, just normal stuff that we're, we have to do on a normal basis, but we've been pretty busy still.
Sure you got plenty of things to do.
Sorry, I haven't got any pictures.
Mr. Snyder's?
I have nothing to add.
Pretty full tomorrow night?
Big night tomorrow night, back to school night, yep, well, about three hundred and fifty people we're planning on coming in the building, five to seven, if you want to come, we'll feed you, anybody.
I like that we're setting records for attendance still.
Yeah, we're still, everything's still on the, on the way up, it's, it's been a nice trend.
Saw tours going through this morning, a couple of tours.
We still get a lot of new people coming through the door, which is amazing.
Thank you, man, just a reminder, is it, is it the end of this week that the generators being installed?
It is Thursday and Friday, so we will be shut down Thursday and Friday.
To everything.
Totally, uh, well, sorry, Thursday morning we'll hold classes till about seven, seven thirty, eight o'clock, then we'll shut down at eight AM, and nobody will be allowed in the building yet.
Just a reminder, can we point? Parks and Rec, library report, Grace. And one thing to add to Grace is I did get recognition, a thank you card from Imagination Library, Polly Park Library, since we are sponsoring that program now, to two thousand dollars last, I guess it's this fiscal year when it went in, but, another recognition there, that's for younger, support younger readers through that program, nothing else in the call, like, the reports, the mayor, council administrator, do you notice in July or Sunday, reconciliation report, new from the audit report?
So this is a, a report that I included, is a report that I get every month, I don't typically include it with the council, not because it, they don't necessarily want me to not see these numbers, but they will fluctuate so bad, and then you will see negative numbers, so it's just not something that I typically put in there, the auditors, however, said they would prefer that we do put this in there, and then I give you a quarterly of, basically, budget actuals of where we're at on a quarterly basis, all reports that, that we look at throughout the year. I think that, and one of the other comments was segregation of duties, even he trapped a smile on that one, said that that one will never. Even he cracked a smile on that one, said that that one will never go away. Um, and then the last, uh, item, I believe that he referred to was.
So where were you reading?
There's like four things, and they're all somewhat, oh, we exceeded nine million in the bank at some point, and if you remember from our resolution previously, we have a nine million dollar limit. It's like nine point two for like two weeks. So I didn't think that we would get things for having too much money in the bank, but, um, so, other than that, we had a, a great report. You'll see that hopefully here. I thought that would be done in about a month. But again, this kind of gives you a rough kind of calculated cash, so, you know, right now, there's seven point three million sitting in our bank. The general fund, the one, it's always scary, uh, because we don't get our first checks from account until September. So you'll, you'll see that number go way up, it'll be north of a million, and then it starts going way down, and then it gets less than two hundred thousand, and then it goes way back up again, so. Other than that, from a cash perspective, uh, we're pretty solid. So I'm happy with, you know, what these numbers look like. Obviously, you can see, um, sewer, that one will be another negative. You see the next month with the transfers like we just did. It'll bring itself back out throughout the year, but, uh, that's why the, the fee increases for the next year. That number has to creep north and get to about four months' worth of operating cost, so. You have questions on this?
This is the first time I've seen this, and, uh, you've helped us, helped me understand how to read this. If I have other questions, I'll let you know.
Yeah, feel free, um, to stop and just.
Right away, I wasn't sure how to read this.
Yeah.
This was helpful.
So are we, should we anticipate seeing this monthly or quarterly?
You will see this monthly going forward, and I didn't necessarily, Laura just pointed out that I, instead of moving it down in the item, leaving the mayor's report on there, I just got rid of the mayor's report.
I missed it too, you know, I checked this, so I missed it.
The next one will have the reconciliation report and the mayor's report.
Sorry, there.
But there's never going to be really any action for us, it's just an FYI.
No, it's just an FYI, so that you see it.
And.
I guess we have forty, we are forty-five separate pounds.
Yeah, um, and each time that we do a larger project, you'll see that pop in. Sometimes we'll replace ones that are obsolete with the new ones coming in, so. But that's a fairly solid number at present.
Thank you for that, thank you for the audit report. It was a little bit me, um, obviously, the mayor's report and council reports.
I'd just say that the Mount Vernon Lisbon Childcare Solutions Group, um, we had a meeting with Kerry Sills and his daughter, Kerry Sill and his daughter, to look at the former LACC space and Turner Club space and fill in the blank child care space, just to see, uh, what their intention is for that, and if we could potentially find an entrepreneur that would come to Mount Vernon and start, Mount Vernon Lisbon, start this up. Um, I did talk to Chris about this a little bit, and we meet again on Wednesday as a group, and we'll talk about what we would like to do, uh, as a group with that space, and Sills offered us, so.
Thank you for being the point person on that, Kerry. Mayor, any reports, council reports, city administrative report.
That was just a reminder that obviously our, our next meeting will be on a Wednesday.
Ten thirty this Friday morning with Cutler Trail?
Yes, yes.
And is there ribbon cutting CDG in the afternoon, Ralph, your second one?
Um, I'm not exactly sure how it works, all of us, because our communication has kind of been hit and miss, so.
Is that the Earth's going to get that one? That was a long ago mover, but. I mean, I don't know if that's happening or not.
I, I haven't heard, um, possibility yet.
That meetings for their products, need change in city hall inclusion, or, or they're ready? The other comments, statements here, before this council, otherwise we adjourn. Thank you very much.
Anybody watching, read Don Staley's biography, let me know now, or else I'm going to take it on the red pearl. South Carolina coach.